Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with our invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Stacy Baumann is here. He is a youth hockey minister in the area and services kids all over this part of the country. We appreciate his attendance today. He'll lead us in the invocation, then afterwards I'll ask Councilman Larry McAteer if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But everyone, please stand.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for your goodness and your provision. We thank you for this day, and we're thankful for the past Christmas season where we're mindful of the incredible gift you've given us in your son, Jesus. We're thankful for a new year. We're thankful for the start and a fresh beginning. I pray that instead of making resolutions this year, we'd be committed to resolving, to be following you and devoted to you and your plan for our life. We thank you for these leaders. We pray that you would provide wisdom. I pray that their desire, more than anything, would be your wisdom, godly wisdom, as they govern, as Solomon had. And we're thankful for their service, for their sacrifice, and for their leadership. Be with them and continue to guide and direct their path. Pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Place the flag. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, once a month, the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club allows us to honor three employees as employee, actually, one employee as Employee of the Month. And then on the first meeting of the new year, we honor our Employees of the Year. We have one coming from police, one coming from fire, and one coming from that broad group known as other employees of the city. There are over 4,000 employees in the city of Oklahoma City, so to be so distinguished and recognized is quite an honor. And we have those three winners here with us this morning. I will ask first Chad Van Tunglen to come forward. Chad is the Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Police Officer of the Year. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as Chad and I get settled.
Whereas Chad Van Tunglen has been a city employee for 10 years and is a patrol sergeant in the Hefner Division of the Police Department. And whereas Sergeant Van Tunglen responds to 911 calls, works traffic enforcement, conducts follow-up investigations, enforces city ordinances, federal and state laws, and trains new officers. And whereas Sergeant Van Tunglen has superb investigative and tracking skills, as evidenced by the number of significant arrests he made in 2011. Whereas the sergeant arrested a bank robber for using footage from the bank surveillance video, which showed the suspect arriving and leaving the bank in a cab. The sergeant got the address where the suspect was dropped off, interviewed several subjects, and located the subject at a local rescue mission, where he was arrested and the majority of the stolen bank money was recovered. Whereas the sergeant arrested three suspects who had stolen a U-Haul trailer loaded with an Ohio Girl softball team's equipment. After viewing a surveillance video and recognizing the wanted suspects from a previous armed robbery, the sergeant tracked two of the suspects to a home where the softball equipment was recovered. The third suspect was located in Norman, where the sergeant assisted in recovery of a stolen vehicle when the suspect was taken into custody. Whereas Sergeant Chad Van Tunglen arrested two serial shoplifters responsible for stealing several thousands of dollars in merchandise from local malls over several months. Sergeant Van Tunglen identified and tracked the suspects to an apartment by using store security camera video that provided the license plate number. Approximately $3,000 in stolen merchandise was recovered when the suspects were taken into custody. Whereas Sergeant Chad Van Tunglen assisted in the arrest of a suspect who was stealing tires and wheels in northwest Oklahoma City. A fingerprint lift on a jack at the scene of one of the thefts helped officers identify and put the suspects under surveillance. When the suspect was arrested, he confessed to numerous crimes, clearing over 30 thefts throughout the city. Whereas his council desires to recognize Sergeant Chad Van Tunglen for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Sergeant Chad Van Tunglen, 2011 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Police Officer of the Year.
I'm telling you, Chad, you had a good year. That was an amazing list of accomplishments. I do need a motion though, so we can make this official. And a second. All right, cast your votes on this resolution. And now, let's show our appreciation to Officer Kegman. Congratulations. And now I'd ask David Ewald to come forward. David is the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Firefighter of the Year. And again, we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read.
Whereas Captain David Ewald has been a city employee for 23 years and is a fire dispatch shift supervisor in the Support Services Division of the Fire Department. Whereas Captain Ewald supervises the red shift in fire dispatch, ensures proper dispatch policies and procedures are followed, maintains office staffing, and ensures emergency incidents are handled correctly. Whereas Captain Ewald began working on a comprehensive Oklahoma City fire training program in December of 2009 and completed it in April of 2011. It was the first Oklahoma City-specific fire dispatch training program since 1984. Whereas Captain Ewald developed a 33-module program that includes information about dispatch processes, the seven-digit phone system, the computer-aided dispatch system, the radio system, proper 911 call-taking procedures, personnel notification methods for large-scale incidents after hours, and departmental procedures that help fire dispatchers enhance their dispatch skills and knowledge. Whereas Captain David Ewald created a 495-slide PowerPoint presentation about the program that is easily accessible to fire dispatchers while they are on duty, and worked with the training staff to ensure the program would benefit fire dispatchers, firefighters, and ultimately, the community. Whereas Captain David Ewald is also a storm chaser and weather expert, and often advises his supervisors of coming weather that may impact the Oklahoma City area or events that may require changes to dispatch procedures. Whereas Captain Ewald's outstanding performance, caring service, dedication, and actions to assist the fire dispatch office, even when he is away from duty, makes him a valuable member of the Fire Department. Whereas his council desires to recognize Captain David Ewald for his commitment, dedication to his profession, and the safety of the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council and the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Captain David Ewald, 2011 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Firefighter of the Year.
And I know the council shares my pride in giving you this honor, and also to all the men and women who represent the Fire Department. How about a resolution? I mean, a motion? And a second? Cast your votes. And now, let's show our appreciation. Firefighter of the Year. Congratulations. Thank you, David Ewald. Thanks. All right, Michael Clark. Michael, you want to come on forward? Michael is the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Year and works for us over at the Myriad Botanical Gardens. We have a resolution.
Whereas Michael Clark has been a city employee for six years and is a nursery worker in the Myriad Botanical Gardens Division of the Parks and Recreation Department. Whereas Michael Clark takes pride in the job he does and takes initiative to learn more about plants and trees and how to best maintain them. Whereas Michael Clark was a grounds maintenance operator at Will Rogers Garden Exhibition Center for six years, which helped him develop his extensive knowledge and experience. Whereas Michael Clark has extensive knowledge about pesticides and herbicides, and is very careful and conscientious of the risk to the environment when using these chemicals. And he has developed expertise in the use of pre-emergents and the maintenance of roses, irises, daylilies, and other such plants. Michael continues to identify areas that he needs to learn more about to develop his expertise, and is currently learning about irrigation systems. Whereas Michael has acquired a wealth of knowledge, experience, and expertise in the care and maintenance of trees, plants, and flowers, and uses them to improve the beauty of Oklahoma City's landscape. Whereas Michael Clark is currently pursuing a degree in music, is active in the community, and volunteers for his church. Whereas this council desires to recognize Michael Clark for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Michael Clark, 2011 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Year.
Michael, it's quite an honor. Congratulations, and thank you for all your work, and the Myriad Gardens are just beautiful. I know we're all thrilled at the results. You bet. How about a motion?
Yes.
And a second? And let's cast our votes. And it's unanimous. How about that? Congratulations. Let's show our appreciation. We're on item three of the council agenda still, dealing with items from the office of the mayor, and we have appointments on D, E, and F. How about a motion on those three?
Yes.
Okay, cast your votes. Those appointments are confirmed. At this time, I'd like to move up an item from the City Manager Reports. I know Mike Knopf is here this morning, and Mike is going to be giving us an update. Mike, you want to come to the microphone? This is a kind of a presentation on events and attractions that are going on in the Boathouse District.
Well, good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year. I'm excited here to come, start off the year with you this morning, to share with you a lot of the exciting happenings in the Boathouse District on the Oklahoma River. We've had quite a lot of activity over the last month or two in terms of development and concepts moving forward, and I thought it'd be a good opportunity to share some of that with you and answer any questions you might have. So, and this is a recent overhead shot there, looking down at our recent developments. We, just to review, we opened the Chesapeake Finish Line Tower, which is the latest building to be completed a few months ago in September, and the Devon Boathouse opened about a year ago. So, a lot of development over the past year, 12 months or so, and a lot more to come. I used to have a slide here that was like this really ugly picture of a ditch. It's what we all remember, the Oklahoma River. But we're trying, we're moving on here, and we're looking at, this is only 10 years, and this is what we have. And I think when I bring in, people come to the Boathouse District from around the country, and really around the world, for our various events, they're amazed to hear that it was just 10 years ago that it really was not much more than a ditch. So, we've come a long way, and it's been very exciting. Something I think that really epitomizes that is this announcement that we made last, just a few weeks ago, with the headquarters relocation of USA Canoe Kayak to Oklahoma City. I'm going to play you a real short video. All right. So, we are now the Center for Paddle Sports in America in Oklahoma City, and that's very exciting. USA Canoe Kayak governs all of the Olympic disciplines for the sport, as well as many other disciplines, and hopefully that video got you a little excited about our future Whitewater Center, too. So, that'll be coming soon. Go ahead and move on. I'm not sure if this slide is... Just a quick overview of the foundation in our community programming. We, this, our community programs come under the name Oklahoma City River Sport, and really has been all about promoting health, wellness, and fun at the Oklahoma River. And we've had many developments and growth in these programs over the past few years since we've, since we've really begun operations down there. And the whole point is to make the river as accessible as possible to the entire community. And I think we've gone a long way in achieving that over the past, just a couple of years, in that we've got more kids than ever in both rowing and paddling programs, really trying to expose kids if we have one of the premier venues in the, in the country, and really even in the world, we ought to have an opportunity for all kids in Oklahoma City to experience that, because we truly want to see our kids either move on, get college scholarships, which there's many, many scholarships available through these different activities and sports, or even see some kids on the Olympic podium someday from Oklahoma City. So, if we've got the premier facilities, we ought to have some of the, a great opportunity for our kids. So, our youth outreach initiatives also have removed all barriers and really promote lessons in health, fitness, and teamwork. And we, and what's very unique about the fact that we have these high-performance athletes, about 50 Olympic hopefuls have moved to Oklahoma City, these are role models that are used in our youth programs, and they go out to schools and kids come to the, to the river. And we actually have had seven high schools now, and middle school and high schools have gotten involved in scholastic programs. They come down to the, to the Boathouse a couple of times a week, and they, they get to race each other. And they've got some of these really, probably some of the best coaches in the country get to, get to spend time with them. So, it's pretty exciting to see kids from Capitol Hill and various other schools from the, the area around the Boathouse, but also as far out as PC and Cutland City North, and we've got a lot of kids from all over the metro area. We were recognized with the President's Council Physical Fitness Award last year. We also have programming at Lake Overholster, the Route 66 Boathouse, not only on the water, but also using the trails with cycling and running programs. And our corporate and group programs have also been very, very successful. We have over 50 local teams. This is getting coworkers out, some very fun and healthy activities after work, and they get to race each other. Rowing's kind of that quintessential teamwork sport. There ought to be a city council team, I think, next year. So, it's actually a really great thing that these, these coworkers get to do, and they get to race under the lights at the regatta, and it's, it's been a lot of fun. Go ahead and move on. There's some images of our youth programs and the activity on the river. And that's, if you haven't been out there, this is Lake Overholster, the Route 66. This is part of that Boathouse concept, complex. There's two facilities. This is where everything began with regard to paddle sports and rowing in Oklahoma City, and we've renovated the facilities over the last year or so. And really, unique resource that we have out there with the Wildlife Preserve and promoting programming in there, have several local schools there involved, and so we're just trying to expand that reach, the opportunities. Also, the, the events have been a bit hallmark to the success of the Oklahoma River, and we've kind of focused on innovation in Oklahoma City. Like, you know, we don't have 100 years of tradition in this very old, rowing's the oldest collegiate sport in the country, but, you know, we don't have that tradition, so we can look and think of ways that will help move the sport into the future, and that's embraced by US Rowing and USA Canoe Kayak and, and the Olympic Committee. And so, we've done that with night racing, and that's, you know, is one of our MAPS Three projects. Just a quick review, we had the Masters National Championship, Olympic Day, the World Challenge. We had teams from Germany, Italy, all, you know, all over the country, or all over the world back at this last fall. And then coming up with the Big 12 Championship in May. We have a, a big event that we're getting ready to announce real soon, connected to the Olympics. The Central Youth Rowing Championship. And in looking ahead, the World Championship in 2014 for canoe marathon, our first World Championship on the river. You can see some of the pictures from the events. We really try to focus on the family aspect at all of these events, making it very accessible. They're always, they've been free to get into and get involved in, so. And then there's a night shot. Can't really see there, but with our lights, we'll be able to see a little bit more, hopefully, with the, the new MAPS Three lighting that's going to occur. I'm going to go through what we call River Sport Adventures. This is an exciting development. As the, as the Boathouse District matures, we really tried to focus on the fact that this is really an attraction for Oklahoma City, and really trying to define it as such. If we're going to have, again, some of the finest facilities, not only just architecturally, but what we do inside of them are also very innovative. We want to promote that to our, our citizens, but also people from out of town, and define it as an attraction. We now have the Lincoln Boulevard Bridge going over the new I-40 is complete, providing this great new entrance in. There's no longer this detour that we've dealt with for the last several years, which is great, and so we can get people in, and it really is a proper, really gateway in. Another thing is, next year, or later this year, we'll have the connection with the, the river canal going underneath I-40 and connecting up next to the Bricktown Canal. You'll get out of one boat and into another, or just walk along the trail, which is going to be huge, in that people can walk from Bricktown into the Boathouse District. And then what we show here on this is just all the different activities. So, you come down there, there is a host of things. You can spend the day there, and this is current and future projects. And you can see by going through there, all the different things, starting from the Chesapeake Boathouse. It is the community boathouse, will remain as such, in that this is where you can go, but rent a bike, rent a kayak by the hour, it's very affordable, or get in one of our youth or adult programs. Anybody can go down there at any time and get involved in a host of different programs. The Chesapeake Finish Line Tower is an incredible new asset that we have there. It is our visitor center on the bottom floor. There's a area, you can come, find out everything there is to do at the river, sign up for a program, or just have a cup of coffee and hang out there. It's probably one of the greatest views of Oklahoma City is in that Chesapeake Finish Line Tower. At the top floor is this observation deck, which is also a pretty incredible sight of the, of the river. I don't think there's a better view of a race course in the world than what we have from the, the Finish Line Tower. The Devon Boathouse is the high-performance center, and as I walk down this, you'll see there's a theme emerging in that this is a campus. This is not individual boathouses that sit alone. That was the theory all along, unlike in Boston or Philadelphia and other places that have great boathouses. They all are kind of isolated. Ours all work together. They all have a unique, they all, they add something unique to the venue, but they're all open to the community. The Devon Boathouse is high-performance. We have our Olympic hopefuls in there. It has a lot of unique features, the only altitude chamber in the world in a boathouse. It's got a, the world's first dynamic propulsion rowing tank. What's significant about that, it's where all our youth programs go and learn to row. They go in the rowing tank, the same tank the Olympic hopefuls use. The UCO Boathouse is coming soon. They're making very good progress in their fundraising efforts. It will bring a music venue and an art gallery to the Boathouse District. The OU Boathouse is also coming soon, making very good, there'll be an announcement on that, I'm sure, real soon. They will bring some additional features for their Division One program and for the university to that facility. In between the UCO and OU Boathouse is this new project that we announced last month, and that is the Youth Pavilion. It's going to be this incredible central pavilion for all of our events, but more importantly, our programs, our youth programs. We have a growth in all of our programs, so this would be a central gathering spot. There'll be a, there'll be a classroom in it. There'll also be a place that we can have different exhibits or expos throughout the year in there, but it will, but it will feature a couple of really exciting attractions, too. Zip Line and the Sky Trail. I'm going to show you some images and explain that more in just a second. And then we show the proposed future site of the Whitewater Center, one of our MAPS Three projects, the lighting up and down the river, which is advancing right now within MAPS Three, and also have concepts for a bike, a mountain bike area, a high-adventure mountain bike area. It's called a pump track area, so it features some very exciting elements for people. So, if we're going to have flatwater kayaking and rowing, and then whitewater paddling, we should have cycling, and then mountain biking. You have a real mix of adventure and, and fun. So, we move on, some of the images, again, we, you can come down and run a kayak by the hour. Anybody can do this, some really great places. Also, now, we have a production studio that's in operation on the Chesapeake Finish Line Tower. We did a streaming show with USA Canoe Kayak a couple of weeks ago. We're going to do more of this for the community in the future. It's really helpful during our big events. Dragon boating will be something, we're going to start a concept every Saturday, starting in, in April, will be Adventure Saturday. You can come down and experience dragon boating, kayaking, cycling, everything for, make it very accessible for you to try all the different activities at the river, and, and take an Olympic rowing experience, be able to go through the Devon Boathouse and really try out everything yourself, and get on the water in a very accessible boat, so. This is the Sky Trail. This is an image, it's still an early image, it's being refined, but this is advancing. We have a major announcement coming soon on some additional support for this. Blue Cross Blue Shield led the way. It's, it's, again, focuses on the health and wellness aspect of the river, in that this is a very active attraction. You're going to climb up through a series of features inside the Sky Trail. This is like a modern version of a ropes course. I mean, in that it's very high-adventure oriented. You're walking over tight ropes and nets, and you're five stories up, and it's, it's very exciting, but you're connected to a rail the whole time. It's continuous belay, so you belay, you get connected at the bottom and you go through, so it's very safe, but, but high-adventure. And so, this is a very new thing, and we're, we're glad to bring it to the Oklahoma River. It really fits in nicely with everything, especially when you look at the, the future projects coming with the Whitewater Center. You see a rock wall on the side. There's another image from behind. And then, of course, the architecture, it's another iconic piece of the puzzle. It's connected to the Youth Pavilion that you see there. This is an image of a Sky Trail somewhere else, much more rustic-looking than our futuristic version, but you can get an idea of what that looks like, something for all ages. There's elements for very young kids and, as well as adults. The Youth Pavilion, as I said, we're actually going to enclose much more of this, be very open, so you can see the whole river, but it's, again, a big, open, central gathering spot with a classroom, meeting spaces. We want to have a place where we can have 100 kids show up from a field trip and, and get involved in programs. So, we're really excited about this. It's much needed. You can see how packed the Boathouse gets. This is our high school leagues that come down. And then the Zip Line, it'll be a 700-foot zip line. Look forward to seeing you out there trying that out. I don't know who will be the first one, but it'll be 700 feet across the river and back, and you will descend over the top of the, the Youth Pavilion as you end, which will be pretty exciting. Great view of the river, and that will, that is the tower that'll be on the south side of the river. The Kaboom Playground is also new. It was just opened recently. This is an image, this is, 300 volunteers came out and helped put this together. It's, again, the start of some of the family-oriented... It's, again, the start of some of the family-oriented playground features that will be out there. Again, sponsored by Blue Cross Blue Shield, so we're real excited to have that in play in operation now. So I wanted to give you an overview, and we're really excited of where everything's going. There will be many more developments in the coming year with our events and development. And we're real excited to see the MAPS III moving forward as well at the river with the lighting project and some of the other features. So thank you for having me this morning. If there's any questions?
Fun times. Do you have timetables on the zip line?
We will, we are moving as quickly as we can. We're actually moving, we're starting with the Sky Trail because you have to have that structure up first. So we think by the end of the year, we should be, we would like to get part of it in this year.
Okay. And if you zip across?
You zip back.
You zip back. Okay. I was wondering how you got back. If you've changed your mind, swim, I guess. Any other comments or questions for Mike? Mike, appreciate all your work and thank you, board. I know they're doing great work out there.
Thank you.
We're on to item four of the council agenda. This is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for December 20th. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for both December 6th and the 13th. How about a motion? Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, we have several today, beginning on page 15. Item 8A is an item for a street closure. There was a meeting held with the applicant and with the neighborhoods adjacent to the street closure about three weeks ago. And our staff made commitment to get some information back to the neighborhoods about some things that the city could do to improve the traffic in the area. We got those items back to the neighborhoods last week, but they would like a little bit of time to examine what we've recommended. So the applicant has requested a one-week continuance to January the 10th.
Okay.
Moving on to page 16, item 8B1. These are items to be struck from the agenda. Item B, 6209 South Land, the owner has removed. Item C, 1312 East Madison, we need to rework the item. Item E, 3420 South Quapa, we'd like to strike the item. The owner has removed. And item H, 1618 Northwest 14th, we'd like to strike that item. The owner has removed. And moving on to page 17, item 8E1B 5809 Itio Boulevard, we'd like to strike that item. The owner has secured. Item C, 6209 South Land, we'd like to strike that item. The owner has secured. Item G, 412 South Walker, we'd like to strike that item. The owner has secured. Item K, 1530 Northeast 14th, we'd like to strike that item to rework for additional violations. Item M, 700 Southeast 20th, we'd like to strike that item. The owner has secured. Item N, 2117 Northeast 22nd, we'd like to strike that item to rework for additional violations. Item O, 1007 Northwest 23rd, we'd like to strike that item. The owner has secured. Item Q, 1012 Northwest 24th, strike that item. The owner has secured. Item R, 2837 Southwest 31st, we'd like to strike that item. The owner has secured. And finally, item T, 2726 Northwest 36 Terrace, we'd like to strike that item. The owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Or recessed the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority? There are two items. All right, we have a motion and a second on both item A1 and A2. Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are two items. Okay, comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, how about a second? We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations?
Your honor, I have a comment on L, and M, and T.
All right, anybody else?
I do, your honor, if you don't mind. D1, item I, and also 6AQ.
All right, Pat, you want to get started with L?
Thank you, your honor. L is a drainage project that's been a problem for a couple of years now. I just wanted to compliment the Public Works Department and the whole concept, the whole group in there for bringing this to the fore right now, finding some money to complete the project and get it out of the way because it was very troublesome to the neighbors out there. On M, I was a little concerned about the bidding, the difference between the low bidder and some of the other bidders on that. And we have a lot of projects in our consent docket this morning that have to do with change orders and amendments. And I'm hoping that we watch this project very carefully. The difference between the first bid and the second, two bids, and the third bid are really significant. And I appreciate the low bids, and I think we've gotten some good work from low bidders. But I am concerned that the difference here was so dramatic that we watched this project very carefully to make sure that we didn't win it in the bid and lose it in the change order. Item T, this is a request for a contractor to close a mile of, almost a mile of road while we do the maintenance on it. There isn't a lot of local traffic on the road, but I'm concerned that we make a real effort to announce to the surrounding area the fact that there is going to be a detour and a closing there because that street carries, in addition to the local traffic, some bus traffic or through traffic as well. I just hope we can make a real effort to make sure that everybody's aware of that before we close it to minimize the inconvenience on our citizens.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you. That's all I have, your honor.
All right, Meg?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Item 6D1 and its companion pieces and ordinance to be introduced, it's related to the redevelopment of the Old Mercy Site up at 13th, just on the edge of the Heritage Hills. This is a project that's been underway for many, many, many years. Urban Renewal has had this activated a couple of times, and it looks like a very exciting project. I would just like to ask Dennis if we could make sure that we're working really closely with the neighborhood as this project moves forward. It's of extreme importance to the neighbors.
We'll make sure that that gets done. Bob, do you have any comment about Meg's request? Has any contact been made with the neighborhood? This is the item?
This is item 6D1.
We'll work with the neighborhood and through the permitting process. We've been, we've had a couple of different meetings with the applicant, and we'll continue to work with them.
I've had a couple of comments from some of the Heritage Hills residents in particular, just wanting to kind of be involved in the process and be sure that the project is as compatible as possible with the neighborhood, given our intent to create some density and all in the area. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item 6I is a resolution approving us to submit a grant to the ASPCA. This is an opportunity to extend for another year, a grant that we received, and help us fund an additional position at the city. And it's been extremely helpful in helping us move toward our goal of more, fewer animals being euthanized through the system. And so I'm excited to see the opportunity to apply for an additional year of funding. And item 8Q is another important step in developing our social services community, I guess I would say. We're here authorizing the real estate purchase to acquire the Salvation Army property, which is located in the Cordish Shore Park area. Salvation Army has acquired the property over at 10th and Pennsylvania and will be building a new campus over there. And I think we'll just have a fabulous facility and, once again, provide such important services to the community. So I just wanted to make note that that's finally underway. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket?
Mayor?
Yes, Pete?
On item AI, I just want to comment, that's a, that is an agreement with the City of Colgate and the Water Utilities Trust for the purpose of providing water, raw water for the City of Colgate. I just wanted to point out, as just one more example of the value of the system that we have in place between southeastern Oklahoma and here, that's just one more southeastern Oklahoma city that will have the availability of good raw water as a result of the efforts of the Water Trust over the last 50 years.
Thanks for pointing that out. You're right.
Mayor?
Yes, Skip?
I would just like to ask a question as it relates to 6AG. It's the street widening improvements between Hefner and, Hefner Road, between Kelly Avenue and Eastern Avenue. And I would just like to know if staff could give me a little update as it relates to the acquisition of easements in that area, approximately what the timeframe will be as far as the beginning of work, or how many more do we have in that area to acquire?
I can find out on the easements. We actually have it, it's in design. The design's going to be completed this spring, and we're actually looking to go into construction next year. So considerably in the process, but the design will be completed shortly, so.
And the reason why I ask that, I've had several calls from property owners and a couple of individuals who have recently purchased property in the area, and they were very much concerned as it relates to the improvements as to what it would do as far as impacting the property they had acquired. So the timeframe looks like it's going to be another year before the project actually gets under construction.
Yes. And I can get you an update on the number of easements remaining. I just don't have that this morning.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I appreciate it.
Councilman, you might recall that this was in the middle of roughly seven miles that we rebuilt and resurfaced using federal funds from, I think, Broadway all the way out to Midwest Boulevard. And we left this mile out because we knew we were going to have a bond-issue project to widen it.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, Dennis.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. They're passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket.
Move the item.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the concurrence docket. Any comments on any of these items? All right, let's vote then. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item eight. This begins a series of items that require a separate vote by council. Item 8A has already been continued until January 10th. That's item 8A, continued until January 10th. That's one week. Move on to item 8B. This is a request for a special permit to allow some outdoor skeet trap and sporting clays over in Ward 4. This is the final hearing on this item. Any comments or questions from anyone?
I'd like for the applicant to come through for a second. I've got a couple of questions, one of the things I want to clear up.
All right. Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record.
Good morning, sir. I'm Dave Martin. I reside at 3109 Oak Brook Drive in Dell City.
The, is everything in order on this thing? It's my understanding that there was some, possibly there was a question about some of the requirements as it came through the planning commission?
That has all been resolved, sir. There were three issues. One was the lead contamination. And we have, we had the Gene Sears Company from El Reno here on the planning commission day. There was, we have a plan in place, a 17-page plan through the EPA for lead cleanup, which is, this property works out perfect for that. Most sporting clay facilities are in the woods where it prohibits big equipment to get in there and clean up the lead. And it's very profitable one way, too, is because the city, when we clean up that lead, we receive money for that lead. The company will come in and do a cost share when we clean up that lead. So we got the EPA standards, which is, these companies are go all over the nation, they clean up that lead. And they've just done two projects in Dallas where the city has grown in, and they clean it up now in made them city parks. So it's basically what it is, is a big piece of equipment that comes in, takes off the top three or four inches of dirt, and sends it through this machine, then separates the dirt from the lead, and it just leaves all the dirt there. And it makes it right back to EPA standards to where everything is clean. You can go out there and put a park on it if you wish in the future. And this property works out great because, as you see where our stations are, they're in the woods shooting out into open pasture. And we maintain that pasture.
Is this property located where the two native stone?
No, sir, it's south of that.
It's on the south side?
On the south side. This was an old abandoned farmhouse, and we should be having our remodel permit right now. We took the existing structure and making that into a 1500.
There's a, there's a, they repainted number on the mailbox there, right?
Yeah, like when we brought the trash dumpsters in, which we already had to do, three of those.
Okay, I know where it is.
There was a lot of stuff on that piece of property. There's still probably another three trash dumpsters full that we've cleaned up to make it. We'll landscape it.
Was there a question about parking?
There is. They're wanting us to put in a 40-car paved parking, and then with a gravel overrun for an additional 200 cars. And as a matter of fact, we're working right now to see that. I believe they want me to put in a variance to the pavement because it's out in such a rural district. But we'll do whatever, whatever the.
The reason I asked about parking is my planning commissioner contacted me and indicated he was not there at the meeting, but he was concerned that the parking requirement was more stringent than necessary considering where it was located. He thought a crushed stone parking. Is it still possible? Are you still working on that, or is that still possible?
That would be a separate application through the Board of Adjustment, but we'll, I'll work with them, and we'll look at the interpretation of the code to see what the requirement is.
But Jim Allen was gone at the planning commission the day this went through the planning commission. But he had called me ahead of time and indicated that he had some concern that, as I said earlier, that the solid parking, I mean, solid parking lot, paved parking, was a little bit stringent for an absolutely rural area that had good runoff, good drainage. If they put a good crushed stone parking lot in, it might, it might be just as adequate and wouldn't increase the runoff perhaps quite as much.
Typically, that's a requirement through the Board of Adjustment that we'll have to look at, but we'll talk to the applicant, see if we can get it there.
Okay.
My idea over crushed stone is to put in that recycled asphalt.
Right.
It's 80% less dusty.
It's a good use for it.
It's much.
Do you need emergency also? My understanding is you're going to try to open next month?
Hopefully, February 1st. We're supposed to, I talked to the building permit, and they're supposed to issue us a remodel permit today. And all we've been doing is just cleaning up the property. I just got an old farmer to come in and take all that old farm equipment this afternoon and tomorrow. As soon as we get that permit, then the remodel's not extensive. It's just taking down one wall and putting in a half-wall for an office and new electrical and plumbing.
Well, it's another, it's another facility that's going to come to the Draper Elm Creek area. That probably wouldn't be viable hardly anyplace else in Oklahoma City. Other than that, we've got all the, we've got the land, and we've got, it's, a great deal of it's cleared. And while I'm not much of a gun person or a sporting clay person, I know a lot of people really enjoy doing it. And it's a, a lot of chambers of commerce and things like that, use them for fundraisers and things, and I'm looking forward to seeing it come.
Yes, sir. We host the Oklahoma State Championships, which will be with us again this June. We do it every two years. And that brings in close to 60 to 100 people from out of town, and they'll be here for the week shooting. And our oil companies do a lot of major benefits. It's run just like a golf course, except we, and it's very controlled shooting because we have stations, they must shoot between, you know, in the stations, no loaded guns outside. It's a very up-and-coming sport. Our oil, like, being 15 to 20 minutes from Devon in the downtown Bricktown District is incredible because already people are, word's gotten out, and they've contacted me, they want to host their shoots here for charity events to where they can do something downtown in the evening. One, Oklahoma, or the Cowboy Hall of Fame, they're, they're developing a brand-new shoot to promote money and raise money for their foundation, and that's scheduled in March.
True. Thank you. I will move approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8B. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously.
Move the emergency.
A motion on the emergency, and we have enough votes, so cast those, and the emergency passes unanimously as well.
Mayor, could I ask one small retraction back on to the consent docket? Not for any discussion, other than I would like for staff to meet with me in reference to 6B, Ward 7. It's the ABC at 3921 North Lincoln. After we're finished, I appreciate it.
All right. On to item 8C, and this reflects some traffic flow changes that are taking place on North Chertel. It's in Ward 6. Meg, you okay with this?
Yeah, I'm fine with this. This is a, really the result of making this street a two-way street, and the five vehicles that were parked there were causing a problem with the sightline. The five individuals that were parking there, I understand, have been allocated new parking, so it's not an issue related to that. So, I would move approval, please.
Cast your votes on 8C. Pass unanimously. Item 8D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8D? All right. Sounds like we're good to go. How about a motion? In a second?
Second.
Cast your votes on 8D. Pass unanimously. Item 8E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8E? All right. Sounds like we're good to go. Up and a motion. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on the unsecured structures list, and it passes unanimously. Item 8F is a public hearing. This is our second opportunity to review this. This has to do with some funding for public safety, and Craig is here and can explain this if anyone deems that necessary. If not, I'll just take a motion. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions on item 8F? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8G is also a public hearing. This is a budget amendment, and again, Craig is here and can answer questions if anyone has any. All right. We have a motion and a second. We're now voting on item 8G. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 8H is a couple of rights-of-way permits. The first is to hold a day in honor of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, and that would be held on January 16th in Ward 6 and 7. How about a motion from that side of the room?
What has been the route as it relates to the parade this year with the construction for downtown, straight down Broadway?
Let's see if Eric has got any information on that. He can come in and share that with us.
Do we have? Straight down to your house?
Yep. While we're waiting for Eric, if you don't mind, I did have a question, and Dennis, maybe you can help, or Eric may need to help me with this as well. Do you know whether or not we're contacting the businesses that are being affected in addition to the property owners? Last year was the first time I think the parade went directly down Broadway, and we had a significant issue with bicycle bicycles and Broadway Wine Shop, and those folks were unaware that they were going to be shut down.
We will make sure that those businesses along the route are contacted.
That would really be a big help.
We can assist in that. Did you get the answer to the question on the route?
So, is the route starting from where?
Starts at 7th and Robinson. It will then move north to 9th, east over to Broadway, and then it'll come south on Broadway as it transitions to EK Gaylord, down to Sheridan, and then it'll end basically just west of the Bricktown Ballpark. But we'll make the notifications on Broadway as requested, and make sure that that's.
I think that would be really helpful. We just need to make sure that there's some form of access either back through the alleys or something, but.
I think we can do something that's maybe to local traffic only or something like that, but it just won't be through that day.
Wonderful. Thanks, Eric.
I mean, so what's, I, I think one of the problems that a lot of people had was the issue of from what time to what time as it relates to, to the actual parade.
So, the closure's from 8:00 to 6:00, but the parade doesn't start until the afternoon. It's at 2:00. So, the parade begins at 2:00, but there'll be an early morning closure to get it set up, and then it'll be reopened after 6:00. And that's based on the application that was submitted. We're voting on item 8H1. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item HH2 reflects our NBA team's wishes to hold events on Reno between the convention center and the sports arena. Comments or questions here? All right. How about a second? And cast your votes on item 8H2, and it passes unanimously. Item 8I, understand we do need executive session on this, Kenny?
Yes.
All right. How about a motion to move that to executive session? Okay. Cast your votes on 8I, and that item is moved to executive session. Item 8J is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8J? All right. How about a motion then? In a second? Cast your votes on 8J, and those claims are denied. Move on to item 9. This is claims recommended for approval. We just have one listed. Is anyone here wishing to speak on that item? All right. How about a motion then? Cast your votes on item 9. Pass unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Pat, you have anything for us this morning?
Just a few comments. First of all, I'd like to call attention to the fact that we were talking about the Salvation Army last week. Dan Ward family donated a building out at Rockwell and Northwest Highway to the YMCA. Remodeled into a YMCA facility out there.
I hadn't heard about that.
And then we have had some discussion about employee health here, and I would just suggest that we make full use of the programs we have in place before we add additional programs to the, to our offering to encourage healthy employees. We've got, apparently, we've got several opportunities in our health insurance plan to do some things, and programs in effect to help our employees. We need to make better use of those facilities to afford. And the third thing I'd like to comment on, we recognize some employees of the year, and I want to comment that they are outstanding examples, the employees we have working for the city, and our citizens are indeed fortunate to have the caliber of people they have working. We recognized three, could have recognized a lot more if we had time to do that. We've got some outstanding people working for the city, and we just need to realize we've got a real bargain with the people we have. That's all your honor.
Sure. Thanks for bringing that up. Skip?
Yes. Mayor, first of all, I would like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and as we go into 2012, to hope that the continuation of the city's success in reference to our finances and, and our capital projects that are part of the, the last MAPS program. But one of the things I would really like to, to speak on is the fact that I think that with the 180 project, we have missed some concerns and relates to a lot of the businesses downtown Oklahoma City. And, and I have had an opportunity because I'm downtown a lot between the courthouse and some of the businesses. And some of the comments that I've received from, from people who are business people who are in this city feel like that they have really been disenfranchised as it relates to the convenience of their customer base, that with all the projects that we have started downtown Oklahoma City has really caused a negative financial impact on the services and the businesses that they have that have been anchored here in downtown Oklahoma City for so many years. And I would just like to think, I would like to ask that, you know, as we go forward with these programs in the future, that we really take the time to have some one-on-one communications with the business people who, who serve a, a base in downtown Oklahoma City and has made the sacrifices to stay downtown, because we've lost a lot of businesses from downtown Oklahoma City since all of the, the construction capital projects have started as it relates to street improvements. And I just hope that we developed a, a plan that we could have a, a one-on-one contact with, with the small businesses who have been, you know, part of this growth of downtown Oklahoma City as providing services and conveniences for citizens. You know, is, the restaurants have been dramatically impacted negative as it relates to these programs, and a lot of the other retail stores. And the fact that we don't have a lot of retail downtown Oklahoma City compared to what we had 50 years ago, but imagine that the, the few people who have, have decided to try to hang on and sacrifice, you know, to, to stay downtown, they continue to feel like that they're not being treated, you know, with a, with fairness as it relates to their, their, their customer base. I would also like to point out that, you know, with the capital projects, you know, around the courthouse and, and the city hall, I think that we forgot to, to, to understand that there is a large population of people who are disabled, that have to come downtown, that have to go to the courthouse. And we had designated parking areas for the handicap that we created on the west side of the courthouse. Now, there's no parking over there at all, and I would like to ask if we could either on the east side of the courthouse or the side, the south side of the courthouse designate several of those parking meters over there for handicapped accessibility, because, you know, they have a right to have access to, to, to these facilities, and of course, you know, those individuals who are not handicapped are having a major challenge, you know, maneuvering around the, the construction sites and everything, so. And I would like to congratulate the Oklahoma State Cowboys for putting on a fine, fine presentation yesterday in representing the state of Oklahoma in the Fiesta Bowl. And so, congratulations to the coaches, the staff, the players, and all the fans that went out to, to Arizona to support a fine football program. Thank you.
Meg?
Thank you. Everybody's a little tired tonight after that fabulous game. I really would like to congratulate the Arts Council for an incredible opening night. We were so fortunate that the weather, other than the wind, was lovely, and there were so many folks downtown. The Museum of Art was open, I think, for the first time as a venue this year. They reopened the Chihule exhibit up on the third floor, and it was full of people beginning at 6:00, and lots of those folks moved over to the game, and after the game let out, myriad gardens was just packed. The fireworks moved to a new venue. It was really a wonderful night in downtown Oklahoma City, and so I want to thank all of the volunteers. It takes hundreds and hundreds of volunteers to make that happen, and congratulate the Arts Council for another successful evening, and wish everyone a Happy New Year.
David, anything? All right. Pete?
Just, just a comment on, on the, the progress on a project in southeast Oklahoma City, a place called Kitchen Lake. The, it's, it's working out as a partnership between the Park Department and the Water Trust to try to restore an old freshwater lake there that has been noted for years and years as a really great fishing place. And there's been really a lot of progress made just in the last six months in terms of trying to turn it around. I look forward it to be in the, to it being a really nice park for the first one that far south and that far east in Oklahoma City. It's really going to be a nice facility, and the cooperation between the two agencies within the city has really moved it forward very quickly. It's really very nice, and it's at 119th and Douglas, I mean, Sooner, excuse me. So, it's really a, it's a commentary on working, how, what working together can do for, for the city.
All right. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and in that vein, yesterday morning, I happened to be watching the Rose Bowl Parade from Pasadena, and they cut away for a commercial, and usually commercials don't enthuse me that much, but this one really did. The Chamber of Commerce, the downtown Chamber of Commerce, had taken out a commercial on Oklahoma City that played that was just outstanding and portrayed our city in just an excellent fashion. So, my congratulations to the folks at the Chamber for putting that together. Thank you, Your Honor.
Good. All right. City manager reports. We've already heard from Mike Knop, and I know we have sales and use tax collections that seem favorable.
Mayor and council, yes, they are very favorable. There's a couple of things I'd like to point out about it. On the sales tax end of it, we're about 1.8% over target and 1.2% ahead of last December. That may not sound like a lot over last December, but you need to keep in mind that we're comparing that to an extraordinarily high December a year ago where we were still feeling the impact of the hailstorm. Last December's growth rate was over 17%. So, the 1.2, when you compare it to that, is really in a positive direction. Further evidence of the impact of the hailstorm is that the tax, sales tax in the building and materials category was down more than 20% compared to last December. The new Allen Mall seems to be contributing to strong growth in the apparel and accessory category, which is up 22% this month and 15% for the fiscal year. Overall, sales tax is growing at 1.8% for the fiscal year and is about $3 million over target. The use tax has seen tremendous growth, over 40% in December over last year. Most of that growth can be attributed to two companies, one in retail and one in oil and gas, and these were not catch-up items. These were simply reflections of significant activity during October and November, and the use tax is almost $3 million over target for the year.
That use tax number is really promising long-term. A lot of people are investing. Any other comments or questions on the city manager reports? All right. Citizens to be heard, and we have an empty chamber. I'm going to assume none of the invisible people here wish to speak. We have executive session. We'll be back.